Um, I'll go ahead and start. Preston will probably come back at some point. So it's seven o'clock, um, we're in the city, um, City Hall Council Chambers. Uh, Yvonne, can you go ahead and call roll?
Yes, George.
Here.
Buckles.
Preston.
Mathelroy.
Here.
Hodgins, you're heaver.
Uh, Lucy mentioned she is gonna be a little late tonight.
Okay.
But you know.
Flynn.
Usual.
Flynn.
Here.
And Houston.
Peter. Peter, he texted me that he wasn't able to.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, so he's absent.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Legions.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions or deletions, um, to the agenda?
Uh, your honor, um, action, item H1, uh, that's not really an action. We're gonna discuss under the public hearing, and then the ordinance would be brought back for action next month.
Will the, is this starting to be two readings and then a third reading next month, or is it?
That's what we're thinking, yeah. We'll do two readings tonight, and then the last reading next month.
Okay. Okay, all right, um, Yvonne then, uh, Yvonne, is there any public comment?
There are no, no public comment, online or.
Okay, uh, all right, next we have the sheriff's report. Yeah, go ahead, Liz.
Well, last month, um, Jim had remarked about how the crime rate seemed to be going down, and I noticed it really jumped in August on this report.
Is there one in particular, just kind of overall?
Um, aggravated assaults.
Yeah.
Burglary, residential larceny, there was an auto theft, forgery, five simple assaults, but that was the same as the month before, four vandalism, yeah, it just seemed like there were more incidences.
Well, that, that's the year before.
Yeah, twenty-five is actually about to say.
I'm looking at twenty-five.
Yeah, I meant the, on that first.
Oh, 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 I see.
Call on, that was last August. Um, but yeah, so, okay, but you're comparing it to July from last month, okay.
Either way, it did.
It did.
And then, and then one thing I noticed, uh, is the new page for us, the backside of this, uh, share.
Oh, yeah.
Where they break down the number of calls and cases, et cetera, um, they did have more cases in the office, with the bias that more court work going on, but it's also, uh, two hundred and fifty-three of our consular chair, and we're handled by a rural deputy, so our deputies handled eighty-seven calls. Thank God for the rural deputies, because they're picking up the, the, all the different calls.
That's a nice page, Jim.
And it still shows they're doing some traffic stops, which is a nice thing.
Okay, anything else on that report? Okay, uh, next move over to the consent agenda. Go ahead.
Um, on number four, page fourteen, Preston, I was hoping you'd do, you were gonna listen to the manufacturer's warranty for the, uh, do your John Deere tractor, did you get a chance to read that?
No, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
It's probably on my list. But, uh, unless, uh, Kai knows, happened as well, but I'll probably, on the John Deere tractor.
Uh, I think you all know on.
Okay.
On that truck, yeah.
Okay, we'll find out.
And then my other question was, um, did we get the extension approval, Yvonne, for South Side Park?
Kai, have you heard anything updates on the South Side Park?
So we did submit, uh, a request to extend that to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, that request was denied.
Oh.
What they did tell me was they would accept another, uh, request for the date of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. I informed them that, that would mean we would not finish the project. They told me to read between the lines and re- re-apply again in, uh, December of twenty-twenty-five. That's where I'm at, Mark, come on.
Um, can you bring it on, you want us to re-admit, to tell them what?
To re-admit for another extension.
Okay, but not for, uh, the twenty-twenty-six.
They denied the December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six date, which is the longest I could ask for a request, they denied that date. Uh, they want, they're going to accept the extension December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, they want me to reapply in December of twenty-twenty-five.
So, so right now we are extended through December.
I don't have a signed copy, but that's, I have an email indicating that's what will be approved.
Our fingers crossed, and then.
So, I guess, if we get the extension until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, uh, then we'll apply for an extension until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, is that what you're kind of?
I'm assuming it's going to be June thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, and then I have to apply again in June. Yeah, if we don't finish the project, we are currently working on that, that's why the pawn is not.
I was gonna say, and that's, that would imply that if we complete the project done, then we got no reason not to approve the extension and reimburse us, is that?
I'm assuming that as soon as I get that paperwork, they will take the reimbursement request.
Yes, thank you.
That is an assumption, but that is how it should be.
The paperwork in December, is that what you're saying? Then that, that.
As soon as I get.
Wait till December to get the reimbursement?
No, as soon as I get the copy back by email from them. I'll send you, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll file that request.
Okay.
Okay.
It's good to know the status on that, so.
Thanks for the, I've forgotten about.
Liz, you want to hear my comment?
Oh, sorry. Um.
Not yet.
Yeah, there you go, okay. Um, okay, any other comments?
I'm gonna now rather than make the motion, uh, yeah, good news, uh, that I was signing some checks this week, uh, or excuse me, last week, to talk to Omega. Preston's officially a city employee now, that's the good news, however, for, uh, August, Preston, he cost us about twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and nine cents, so welcome aboard.
We're glad you're here.
I'm not saying you got that, Cobb gets, uh.
Wow.
Not a moment too soon.
Exactly. I think that's, uh, pretty much, and I did take a good look at all the, uh, expenses and, yeah, it makes sense, we did spend a lot of money, again, now over six hundred dollars for us for CPA, but that's a lot less than we had been paying you, so hopefully we'll get toward the end of having this paper, we'll get, uh, quite done and be back to normal.
Yep, Peter.
Uh, move to approve the consent agenda, do I need any extra numbers in there that I'll have to say?
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion? Jim, do you have any?
No, I just wanted to check.
Just wanna check.
Thank you.
All in favor? Great, that's, uh, unanimous. This is the unanimous one, listen to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They'll be voted down.
Gotcha, that's why I make sure of course, keep doing that, let's move. Okay, um, all right, next we have a public hearing, um, for ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash oh-four, amending chapter thirteen dot oh-four of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to water account depositing procedures.
Yeah, that was just information.
In this information. Okay. Okay.
So, kind of a new process with the public hearing on our ordinance, uh, and your charter requires three readings for an opinion, so, uh, uh, we can get through one or two of the readings now, open up the public hearing, big comments, discuss it, uh, and if there's any changes, we'll bring those back for a third reading, and action consideration, uh, next month. Sound like a plan, uh, okay, so, uh, our procedures for conducting the readings is in our charter. And, uh, maybe you can walk us through that, Tyler.
As far as the, the process?
For the first and second readings.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a script on page thirty-seven.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
Okay, a little more yes and no, I'm reading.
But it's important, yes is a.
Oh, yeah. I'm happy with the little script, because I've done it several times, but I wouldn't get it exactly right. Uh, okay, Liz.
I move to read ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash oh-four, zero-four, and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero-four of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to water account deposits by title only.
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor? Okay, that's united, who needs?
Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-four, and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero-four of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to water account deposits.
Let's see, I'm going, I make a motion to accept the reading of ordinance of the ordinance.
Of course.
Of, yeah, ordinance twenty-twenty-five zero-four, okay?
I second it.
Okay, any discussion? All right, uh, Yvonne, can you take a roll call vote?
Yes, Buckles.
Yes.
Mathelroy.
Yes.
Hodgins.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time by title only, follow, oops.
Yeah.
I move to read the ordinance twenty-twenty-five zero-four for the second time by title only.
I second it.
Okay, uh, discussion on that? Okay, um, all in favor? Okay.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-four, and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero-four of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to water account deposits.
Peter.
Move to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-four. Second.
Oh, S S three.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Good catch, all right.
I said.
So we had, so, okay, so discussion? None, okay, uh, Yvonne?
Buckles.
Aye.
Mathelroy.
Yes.
Hodgins.
Yes.
Flynn. Yes.
Okay, so the third and final reading will be read next month.
Awesome.
Okay.
So now, uh, we conduct a public hearing on that.
Okay. I need to open the hearing.
Right, you can open it whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and open up a public hearing regarding, um, uh, twenty-five dash oh-four.
And you can call for a staff report, I can brief what it's about.
Okay, yeah, you have, you have it.
So, uh, your honor, this is a, uh, continuation of a matter we first discussed back in early June with economic development issues, uh, and, uh, uh, we're, uh, we're talking about modernizing our utility billing procedures, uh, making the owner of the property responsible ultimately for the water bills, uh, of any tenants or any users of their property. But we want, we wanna be in position to bill tenants at a convenience on behalf of the owner. So, uh, to, to move into that, uh, modern billing system, uh, we need to just remove any requirement for water deposit. The council's already take, taken action to remove former, uh, uh, water deposits. And, and so this action, this ordinance change, uh, we would not be requiring any water deposits for future use, and then eventually, we won't have any. It'll take a long time, many, many years, before we won't have any, but, uh, going forward, it, uh, we'll adjust our water use agreements, and, uh, we'll make it very clear, you know, that the owner's responsible. That's all I have to say, your honor.
Uh, so I'm guessing, do you have any testimony from an advocate? Just.
Advocate, but yeah, anybody's public comment.
Okay. Um, okay, any public comment regarding this, um, hearing, uh, for this hearing? Regarding the ordinance, ordinance, okay. Um, do we have any questions of staff? Okay. Um, I think that's everybody then.
Yeah, you just, you go ahead and gavel the close of the hearing.
Okay, uh, well, then I'll close this hearing at seven eighteen. Okay.
Okay, and, uh.
It'll take me a while to get used to that.
Yeah, the script.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, um, so that was the ordinance, so then the next would be the Polaris, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um,
Okay, Jim? I have a question, uh, Kai, do we have a estimate of how much we did actually get through this thing? Got three little miles, et cetera, but we're not gonna get our thirty-two thousand dollars back. Uh, you have an estimate of what we might be able to get in terms of surplus.
It is going to be a public auction.
So, we're out. Okay, thank you.
Will be reserved, but I do know the dealer offered us, it's actually less than what I assume we're going to get public auctioned.
So that we do have a reserve at the auction, so they can go, five hours sold, no, that's.
Correct, we would establish a minimum.
They, yeah, they offered us twenty-eight thousand, that will be.
Thanks.
That, Kai, well, I guess I could ask a question on this too, as far as this, the surplus goes, um, I know how a different government organization does it, I was curious about how the city does it, it's just, it's all anonymous with, um, a reserve amount, and it's just basically highest bidder, that's who gets it, you can't have any, there's no restrictions on who can bid or anything like that?
Uh, they gotta be pre-qualified to bid, and I don't know what their pre-qualifications are, but, but if you're pre-qualified, you can bid on that, uh, and, uh, we, we, this would be, uh, I, I don't know how rare this would be, going to public auction, uh, I think it's great for a vehicle especially, but, uh, stuff we normally surplus, it's not gonna be handled this way at auction. We would, uh, we might advertise, uh, we might know some people that are interested, it could be, you know, it's like, it's like used fire hose or, you know, something, it's not, this is a really nice piece, we expect to get a good price, uh, but normally, we wouldn't be going to auction for surplus items.
Jim, go ahead.
Um, I don't know if they've been surplus, but there's a lot of items out by the Austin Water Plant, they're just sitting there, have they already been surplus, or are we?
Two, four of them have been surplus, all the utility trucks over there are up and running, we've got all those up and running, but we do have four vehicles out there, it is much more difficult to surplus something that is not running than it is running, because we're limited on where we can take it, uh, organ surplus will not take a not running vehicle, and I have always been happy with what we've surplus, the organ surplus, the, the return has always been good.
The catch is, if we've got something out there that's not running, it costs us more to get it running.
Seal bids, I've never had it with, the outcome of that.
Thank you.
Okay, Liz.
I move to approve the surplus of the twenty-twenty-four Polar, Polaris, how do you say it?
Yes.
Polaris, S X S, according to the ordinance, they said.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Great, uh, I hope we're open, all in favor? All right, unanimous. Okay, uh, next, um, we have a discuss, uh, IGA between City of Sheridan, a one percent core management of the Enterprise Zone, and other business services.
Yeah, thanks, your honor, I, uh, uh, I, you know, I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, Kai, and Yvonne, and Tyler for throwing the packet together, uh, last week, when I wasn't here, um, uh, uh, typically, you'll never see something on the agenda that doesn't have something in the packet, you know? But, uh, it's okay, you know? So, I, it's a good, it's a good item to discuss, so we can bring something back for you next month. So, uh, uh, this was another item we talked about in June in our work session, about working with Willamina on our Enterprise Zone management, and, uh, and, and in thinking over this last week and all, uh, it's really probably cleaner for each city to have a contract with SEDCOR. Uh, we wouldn't really, we wouldn't need an intergovernmental agreement with Willamina, a separate agreement. Uh, we would have our own agreement with SEDCOR, Willamina would have their own agreement with SEDCOR. The parts about the Enterprise Zone services are all gonna be the same, uh, we would pay our fair share based on population, which is seventy-five percent. Uh, the first year's cost to manage the Enterprise Zone is fifty-five hundred dollars. We would pay seventy-five percent of that, that would be in our contract for the, uh, with SEDCOR. They would have a similar contract with SEDCOR where they pay twenty-five percent for that amount. In addition, our contract's gonna cover a lot of other business services that we want to be able to access. Willamina, they can have something in there if they want, we're gonna, we wanna cover all kinds of things where they assist, like how Abashaw helped with the Myers property, and getting, bringing that into compliance. Doesn't fit under Enterprise Zone, it fits under other business services, so, uh, so, and, and this, this would basically be for the fiscal year, so it'd be kind of back in, I expect, back the end of Ju- July first, and I'll run through the end of the fiscal year.
Some of those services, um, uh, I believe we talked about, it would cover what SEDCOR presented in the Industrial Lands, um, report too, and kind of their step four, is that right?
Uh, a lot of their follow-up is in that report, because when we did a contract, our last contract with SEDCOR was to complete that analysis, and they did that. Uh, so, yeah, a lot of what they're doing under the Enterprise Zone was called out in that report. It's a, it's a follow-up to that, uh, and, uh, and in some cases, it could mean helping a business to recruit, retain, expand, uh, uh, all of those options, it might fall under an Enterprise Zone, or it may not. So, uh, I think this is, this is really the cleanest way to do it, we don't really need an IGA to spell off the seventy-five point five. Uh, I expect the services to, to go up, uh, as we use them more, and they get more involved in the Enterprise Zone stuff over time, but the first year, uh, uh, they're estimating fifty-five hundred dollars, very reasonable. Uh, we get the agreements under our belt, and, uh, we can, as you know, we're already working with Abashaw pretty closely on things, yeah.
We'll get it, we'll have, you know, the Enterprise Zone or another, ten years of them managing it, so, same as the last.
Correct, yes, and, uh, so unless there's, unless there's some other thoughts from council, we're gonna bring back our side of it, uh, next month, and we'll be working with Willamina to get them to go their side. Great.
Jim?
I discussed this with Preston, this could be the first of potentially several agreements we might finally start working with Willamina versus against, or just ignoring whichever we've been doing. I think it'd be nice with two small towns and not a lot of money to, uh, pool our resources, but any chance we get, and this is a good example of that.
And another thing that Jim and I talked about possibly was, we each have two-year agreements with the sheriff's office, and by the end of the next two-year agreement, you know, I wanna have both councils talking about the idea of one agreement, sheriff's office contract for both cities, it's, there's a real good economy of scale there, uh, and why not have all the officers available to us for both cities? Uh, so I think, uh, I, I'd like the councils to talk about that before our two years up. I think there's an economy of scale there.
Would both cities save money that way?
I think so.
That'd be good.
Well.
Yeah, 'cause it would be basically, I think they have two deputies and we have three, so instead of us paying for five, we would still be.
Well, we would still pay for three, and they pay for two.
Right.
But we don't, we only need one sheriff, we only, we need one lieutenant, one contract, uh, it might be better service. Economy of scale and better service, that's what I, I think it'd be, 'cause we're not that far off, we're, we can work together on that.
And right now, how it is, is, I mean, if, if you don't have a, you know, contract deputy assigned to us, but Willamina does, I mean, if something happens in Sheridan, then, you know, an officer will, I mean, it's not necessarily the officer from Willamina that comes, but we still get, you know, a deputy that comes, um, but.
And we're always gonna have the backup for rural, as you can see from the sheriff's apartments, it's a really good, uh, law enforcement service that we're getting, uh, and before we leave though, uh, I know you worked on this, Tyler, here last week and all, is there anything else you wanted to say about not doing the IGA and doing separate agreements?
I think it's much better for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, very good, well, thanks for coming up on that.
Quiet, right on.
So that's what we'll do, we'll bring that back next month.
Okay, well, then, um, we'll move on then to, uh, department reports, um, looks like public works is up first, that's on page forty-five.
Well, Kai, well.
Come on, Kai, you got credit.
Nice. Um, Kai, I know, um, that, that lead on East Main, I don't know if it's the same one, but another one, Hurricane, the one I've, I've seen, uh, is it kind of similar to the one that was on West Main? Is it, 'cause I know it took a little bit to, um, you know, get it to stop leaking, I don't know.
No, the one on, the one on West Main is still there, we've actually just shut the valve off to that one.
Okay.
So we dug down nine feet, didn't find that pipe, uh, we did find some lot of concrete, there's a lot of fill on West Main, and that pipe goes over the bank, so that, that's gonna be a job that we're going to tackle with a much larger construction company than we know they use. Uh, the East Main, and we've been working, how many hours the guys put in last week, but it's over fifty.
Oh, wow.
We've had a lot of leaks, it's that time of year, things dry out, so this is our leaky time, uh, the ground dries, and it, uh, just contracts, and we get a lot of leaks, so the one on East Main, we think is a, uh, surface line. Uh, we have to coordinate with the state for that one as well, it's on the highway.
Oh, right, alright.
Yeah, so we do have in, um, we had that on the schedule, but we got pulled off that way to do something else, but we do have the permit and the state for that one.
Okay, so they have to, they have, the ODOT has to say, yeah, go ahead, or do they have to come out?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, while, uh, I'm talking about ODOT, do you, have you heard of anything about the ADA project? Are they still gonna do that, or?
It's still moving forward, uh, I don't have a contract, a prescription due for that.
Okay.
But yeah, absolutely down the fort.
I was just wondering if that was.
It's managed, so, yeah.
Oh, okay, 'cause I know ODOT, uh, I, I don't know, they might be losing, they might have layoffs, I'm not sure for what was going on at this point, but I was just wondering if it was still standing, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, Jim?
Just piggybacking, what he just said, that the ODOT, uh, curves, is that, when we're also gonna do the repair under the sidewalk, uh, through the waterline, I know that ODOT and us were working together on that.
For West Main?
Believe it was West Main.
Yeah, we were, we were gonna try and. Yeah, we were, we were gonna try and coordinate that with the project, um, that valve and line are crucial to the city, but it's, it's a nice backup for us, so I'm of the mind that we're gonna go ahead and move forward with that project. Uh, we're not gonna, ODOT, I don't remember, I do have a date for that, and that's when I decided to move forward and fix it ourselves, so I, I, it's not this calendar here.
For ODOT?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's sometime twenty-sixth.
Okay, so it's twenty-sixth, okay. Okay.
Yeah, it was twenty-seventh year, I don't remember, I just know it's not soon enough for us. It's a late form, but I, yeah.
You mentioned the, uh, leak on East Main is gonna be addressed on September ninth, did that get taken care of?
No, it was on, it was on the schedule, but we, we did not get it out, we had pulled off.
Uh, uh, oh, the, uh, the sewer line of your report, uh, got that our permit request was initially approved by the D Q, but subsequently rejected by the O H A due to mapping discrepancy. Uh, so did we resubmit to the O A K with the new stuff they wanna know about?
Yeah, we had a development team meeting on Thursday and discussed that with our civil engineer, and they remained the understanding that D Q had accepted it, um, and O H A did not have the authority to reject it, they were, it has been rejected, and they're gonna need to work on it.
Oh, so you got from Neener Neener for once, that's good.
I got a voice note, yeah.
Um, uh, the, uh, Peter Memorial Plaza, it looks like, uh, things are moving along. I know we got, we did out and all, they accepted and we're, it's just already not being critical at all, but it seems like part of the reason we jumped on it right away was because we wanted to get it done before the rainy season hits.
Correct.
And, uh, we're just having a, uh, you know, meeting on the twenty-second of September, now we're getting toward, uh, you know, rainy season. Will they be able to work on at least part of that, um, even if it is, or not, maybe the river doesn't come up, of course, but.
Yeah, the river, if, if you look at historically, the river levels really don't come up until late winter, so at this time of the year, it, it takes quite a bit of rain, uh, just to give it up ten feet, and that's well outside of our work area to access.
And then one final question, and it's about, uh, the Dog Park, um, you have an approximation, I've seen some outrageously wrong guesses about how much the Dog Park is costing the city, and do you have just a, a ballpark figure that's actually relatable versus some of those I've seen online?
Four hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, I don't think we're spending four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars on any of that.
That's what they're saying online.
Well, they're looking at the budget, well, they can, that's the entire budget.
Sure.
The, the entire parks budget.
Yeah, I just, don't quote me on that, but I mean, obviously, that's, it's not, and that's mostly grant, so, um.
I see, they got the post in, I, any idea when the fencing will go up?
Tomorrow.
Oh, excellent, but.
They had to wait for the concrete to dry.
Because of the, uh, grassy.
It's up a little bit or so.
Probably not usable till spring though, based on just getting the grounds set up.
Correct, we'll, we'll get it seeded in time, but it'll, it'll take a while to sprout, yeah.
Excellent, thank you very much, hopefully keep some people quiet and calm that are worried about we're spending all that money on the I G A.
I'll, I'll research what we're into the Dog Park, so.
Thank you.
I expected some of your time, right? Liz, do you have some?
That was my second question, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Kai? Okay, alright, thank you. Um, yeah, thanks for the library director report, um, I don't know if Gwen's online or not, but, um, yeah, um, Jim?
Uh, I went through last month's numbers and this month's numbers, and, uh, very comparable, most numbers this month are actually up there for more use in the library, which is excellent, which is why we have a library that's getting used, that's awesome. So I think once again, Gwen's doing a bang-up job, uh, with these programs and, uh, getting things done, one thing I did notice, uh, under program participation, uh, this month, uh, two hundred and thirty-four people participated, a hundred and sixty-six youth, which is one of the things, one of the things we, uh, wanna get is, uh, getting very used to do, and, uh, I think it's worth of the noise program at the library, that's outstanding. So once again, kudos to Gwen, all her work.
Yeah, I didn't know there was a block of my dollars.
Oh, yeah. Any other, uh, others on that? Good, next, uh, recorder, rain tracking.
Work.
Well, there's no changes reported, and Kai already reported the, on the Southside Park update, so we've killed that bird already. Um, the one thing I wanted to make sure that, um, we are reminding people about is the, um, the community grant, um, cycle. I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and send you guys out an email in case there's anybody interested in applying, um, because you'll be looking at those in October, and so I know that there's the, the traditional, um, ones that are doing like trick-or-treat type things and looking for donations for, uh, fall and, um, winter programs, so I'm sure that, um, for those of you that are in contact with those organizations, you have an opportunity to be reminded and remembered to make sure they apply.
What is the deadline for?
Um, I just, I didn't get the calendar today, let me double check, so it is, let's see, our meeting's on the twentieth, so the fourteenth at fourteen P M.
Okay.
Is the deadline. But I'm gonna email you at all a reminder, but, um, it was not an ideal day of emails, so, but integrity, we, we've all been affected, so integrity will, is working on that, so.
Yeah, I have a question about the email issue, does it have anything to do with the certificate? My email keeps popping up that I have a bad certificate, do I really wanna use it? I say, well, yeah, I wanna get my emails.
Our unofficial I T in-house princess, Omega, has been working with I T, and so I don't know the update on that, I just know she's been working really hard with them, so I'm not sure where they're at, but I know that she has been on the phone quite a bit.
It was making me trying to download a authenticator and.
Yeah, it's like, I'm not downloading anything.
From Microsoft, but it was.
Yeah.
I did, yeah, once and ended up, ended up outworked, so.
So if you need some emails, just get ahold of me, I still have, I still have access somehow, so.
Okay. Uh, okay, any other questions on that, okay, um, next we have the planner report. Liz?
So, is Liam online?
No.
Can you, um, okay, maybe Tyler knows, um, when will the ten percent discount be implemented for residents for the new, um, where am I, the, the new, the city has indefinitely inspired your community rating system, so, um, there's a ten percent discount for residents?
That's already in effect.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so they're gonna keep it, so no change there.
Yes, we, uh, just got notified that that, uh, class eight, uh, designation will continue, so if we were having the ten percent before, that is what will continue.
Yeah, so no, no increase to it, so no change.
Right.
But we still had it, so that's good. Jim?
Um, I'm gonna toss this at you, Chris, and although this is the report, but, uh, as I'm reading the, the second paragraph, P L A twenty-five, there's a one, uh, in Lehman Sterns. Guy requests that we give him a property line change, we approve it, and he doesn't wanna talk to us now, is that, is that what it says, it's like, does it look like?
Sort of, we, uh, purchased, uh, tax foreclosed property from the county, because we have a big storm drain there, and we were working with, uh, an adjacent property owner to realign the property lines to the fences that they have, because it didn't match along with the, uh, actual tax boundaries.
It sounded like it was his benefit that the fences are repaired, right?
It, it was gaining property.
Excellent, so he might not wanna pay five dollars more taxes, that, well, we might deserve that.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other questions for the planner? Jim?
I just have a question, uh, I've got the, uh, from the newspaper with me, but it's, uh, the, uh, property that's gonna put the eighteen, uh, mobile units, uh, on a fly lot, uh, has gotten a grant for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's gonna be moved forward now, so we'll have some, new houses coming in, in theory, that's good news, go ahead, Ben, what you got?
Uh, as of, some days ago, they're working there, they got equipment in there, or they're actively working there.
Where is it?
Down Sheraton Road.
Okay.
Right inside, right next to, uh, the Anderson property.
Um.
Anderson property, fly lot goes down through their property, in front of their property.
I think there's a, there's a house, it's almost done being built, uh, kind of close, close to there, he's got a metal box, it's, it's, must be, it's down there, okay. Okay, any other? Okay, all right, well, we'll move on then to, uh, city manager report.
Well, thanks, your honor, I've, I've got four things to bring up tonight, uh, uh, the first is, uh, there was a request from council, previous council, uh, to, uh, to report a total of, uh, state and federal fines and penalties that the cities had to pay, uh, oh, in, uh, recent years for lack of filing or late filing. Uh, and, uh, that total amount is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
How far back does that go, is it a few years or?
Quarter three of twenty twenty-four.
Quarter four.
Oh, like a year, oh, wow, okay.
That's all within the last year, I guess.
Okay, I was thinking, it might have gone back a couple years, but, okay, all right, yeah.
Yeah, it is, and it's, uh, could there be more, uh, I suppose there could, I don't expect anymore. We paid for all of our fines and penalties in the state last fiscal year, uh, and, uh, all the federal things, uh, came in this last month, so I don't expect there to be anymore, uh, but, uh, so that's the first item, your honor, I wanted, uh, was asked to, uh, tell council what that total amount was, uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, uh, the Myers Industrial Park. You, you heard that they were recently, uh, shut down by the Fire Marshal's Office, and, uh, they've ceased, uh, uh, their manufacturing activities, uh, they're continuing to do some compliance activities on the site to, uh, mainly, uh, address certificate of occupancy issues, which is the most concern to the, uh, Fire, uh, Marshal's Office, and, uh, uh, wanted to thank Young Hill County and their staff for, uh, helping, uh, to, uh, uh, expedite these requests. Uh, as you know, we've talked up with Young Hill County for certain building services, uh, and plan review, so that's being done, expedited for Myers, and try and get them back online as soon as possible. Uh, I spoke to, uh, uh, Abashaw a few times this last week, uh, SEDCOR has been helping out greatly in this, uh, in this matter, uh, when, uh, SEDCOR understood what had happened, uh, within forty-eight hours, they had relief services available to the employees on site, uh, and, and that's Abashaw and SEDCOR, we can thank for that, and those services are ongoing for, uh, for those workers. Uh, but the emphasis right now is to continue, uh, working to bring those buildings into compliance, and that is being done. Uh, hopefully, it's being done fast enough not to lose more jobs, uh, but, uh, uh, thanks to Kale for attending, uh, a meeting, we circled the wagons a bit to find out what we could do to help the Myers, and, uh, and that's been ongoing for a number of months now, uh, uh, but, uh, now dealing with the, uh, uh, Fire Marshal's Office, and, and I'm, uh, and we're all having to deal with that, including the, the county, uh, building official, so, uh, I think that's going well and it's progressing, and I just, uh, am so grateful for Abashaw for being at the center of that, to not only document compliance, but to communicate that to the Fire Marshal's Office. Uh, so, I was thinking Kale, I think the county, and, uh, and then the Myers Brothers for, you know, stepping up and, and getting this corrected. Uh, is there any kind of questions you had on that at all, that, Jim, Jim?
I just wanna say it the right way here, I understand there was some, uh, disagreements between, uh, the Myers plant and the Fire Marshal as to what some buildings were used for, do you know if that dispute has been adjusted, uh, solved?
Not solved yet, but I expect it to be pretty soon, there's four buildings that need to be given certificates of occupancy for the, the right uses, and, uh, one building's probably gonna be taken down, one's a slim dunk, the other two need some architectural drawings, which have already been done, so, so I think, I think that's all in pro- in process.
Excellent, yes.
And, and Brad especially knows, but, uh, Brian too, I mean, the, the city's been on board with them for three months, and Abashaw and the county, the city too, uh, uh, I really think they're being, uh, taken care of as a member of the community that, uh, provides these important jobs, uh, you know, they're in the city, we're, we're doing what we can to be an advocate and to help see them through, uh, realizing to, again, that we, uh, we subscribe to all the firefighter safety issues, public safety issues, uh, employee safety issues, all of that uh, uh, is important, uh, and that's what they're trying to impose, uh, so, yeah, it's been a long process, several years, two-plus years, and we're gonna get it fixed.
Yes, and one other thing, I, I don't know if everyone knows, probably does, but, uh, besides the woodmill, uh, Brad Myers is probably both on the Burton Town and Builder Supply, and I have a suspicion if, uh, if plant were permanently closed down, he would just say, well, gonna take my ball and go home, so wouldn't be just one business, it would be three that would, uh, be gone, and the effect on the community would be amazing, because also Brad Myers is a, a very friendly person to the city, does a lot of things for the city, donates, that's, he's a fantastic individual, so, uh, to have that plant get shut down would be devastating for the community.
Uh, it, it would be, Jim, but, you know, we can't control certain things.
Oh, sure, I understand that.
And I think, I think Brad and, and Brian's hearts are in this community, and, and they're, uh, they're, they're trying. Uh, the, 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 we're all serious, we gotta get this done, gotta step up now, Brad and, and, and Brian, and, uh, and I think they're doing that, so.
So, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, you guys can help me out on this, but the fire chief came and gave a presentation, and he talked about, he had on the list.
Is it? Is it? I think it was.
Oh, it was, okay.
Never mind.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, it was.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We do have a new fire chief now, uh, Chief Riggs, he's, uh, you know, from this district, you know, uh, uh, and goes through the ranks, so he's the chief now, that's, uh, good, I've met with him a few times, uh, and, uh, we're, uh, uh, we both have a relationship with the Fire Marshal's Office, uh, which is different, but that doesn't mean that the Fire District and the city can't be friends and collaborate, so, uh, uh, I think that's all, uh, uh, so far, I mean, it's all working out fine.
I, I think, Liz, like, I can't know what your question is, but basically, from, from that, it is, it's similar, similar, um, list as far as action that needs to be taken, as far as.
As far as action, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, Jim?
Um, one nice thing to, uh, announce, Jason, you've signed, uh, Sheriff's Fire Department's low on funds, lower than anywhere we are, which is surprising.
Fire District.
There, thank you. Thank you. And as a result, they're scratched, they're making it, but the pancake breakfast being on twenty-eighth is a big fundraiser for them. And I think if you care about having your house safe, if there's a fire, you might want to just have some pancakes, give them a little money. They, they do a fantastic job and I did not realize that how much it costs, whether they haul somebody to a hospital or not. I'm gonna get the cost number, at least six thousand dollars cost to them just to start that fire, that ambulance up and go out, find somebody and say, oh, I'm okay. Doesn't take many of those, just kill your budget and then you have even, you know, help get it ready to get to the hospital. So it's a big cost that they have to accept. So it's not hard to see why they wouldn't have a lot of money.
Preston?
Okay, a couple more items. The Stella Jones Superfund site has gotten a lot of attention lately because a big eleven-page AP story came out last week along with DEQ announced their fines and penalties for the site, just over a million dollars. That was announced last Friday. So there's been a lot of discussion about that. And, and I wanted to mention some things I think that are very pertinent for all of us here to understand some facts in this situation and where the city should be moving forward on this. So a number of points on this. First off, I, I think there's, there's been some information put out there that we're, we're entitled to some of the fines or we're gonna share in the fines, something like that, and that is not correct at all. We're not entitled to any of that fine money that DEQ is levying. But what, what we do have an opportunity to do is to talk to the owners about maybe using some of their civil penalty fine amounts for a related city project. So that's, that's where we should be putting a lot of our efforts right now. Kale and myself have a meeting planned on October first to meet with the owners of Stella Jones site. And, and discuss potential projects that they might be interested in funding through their civil penalties. That's not a public decision, that's a private decision. They don't have to spend any money on our projects. DEQ is not involved in that process, it's between the city and the owners. So we, we're already working on a staff level with our Civil West to determine some projects. Liz has given me some input on projects. If any of you have input on projects, talk to Kale or myself. There's not gonna be a public process on projects because it's not a public decision, it's their decision, a private decision. And, and we wanna present them with some options. And, and they may just like one of those that we can follow up on. If it works out, great, if it doesn't, it doesn't. But we have that opportunity now. It's a collaborative stance, stance to work with the owner to see if they would be willing to fund a city project. There's been some discussions about, gee, the DEQ leveled over a million dollars in fines. Why don't the city hop on board and throw more fines on top? No, that's not a good idea. What are we gonna get out of our ordinances? It's not, we should not have the attitude of being punitive here. That's DEQ, that's EPA. We right now should be collaborative and thinking what's best for our community and working with these owners and, and how they wanna spend eighty percent of those civil penalties. We have an EPA final report that's pending. It's gonna go over the last few years of practices out there. More civil penalties, who knows? Just like the DEQ report, there could be criminal referrals, who knows? In fact, there already has been through DEQ, but we don't need to get involved in any of that. We wanna know what the EPA final report is. That's pending. That'll be nice to know what they have to say about all that. But a few more important facts I wanna throw out here is, you know, I haven't, I don't have a lot of history here in Sheridan. But I, I tell you that talking to staff, talking to some of you and a few other people I've met in the community, and as well as this very nice eleven-page article that the AP came up, which other news services picked up in the, you know, the twisting, cherry picking thing. Wonderful eleven-page report by the AP. That's the basis of most of my knowledge. If you see something in that report, which you've all had a chance to look at, it doesn't seem accurate, let me know. But I think, I think it laid it out there pretty well. And, and I think in all of this, in the history, I've talked with our consultants and staff, not one time has, has staff ever been concerned through like the Oregon Health Authority that our water has ever been unsafe. It's never happened regarding this issue here. I'm not aware of anything through the OHA that has told us that the water was unsafe. It's never happened. Does that mean that maybe something got into our water or, or didn't? You know, all of that could be, but DEQ doesn't control the quality of our drinking water. That's Oregon Health Authority. We follow all of their guidelines to a D. Even some of these chemicals they mentioned in that report. Those were all tested for several years, they're not being tested anymore. We follow the guidelines from the Oregon Health Authority. And, and they're not concerned about our, the safety of our drinking water right now, and neither am I. And there's more information we're gonna learn from the EPA report. And we need to wait for that before we do too much. There might be another factor too that's on the tip of my tongue, but Jim.
There's a chemical I can't pronounce, it's several letters long, yeah. It's a known carcinogen, but normally is not tested for. We haven't been testing for a while because it's not usually there and it's very expensive to do. Do you know if OHA has just made a one-time recommendation, hey, why don't you go ahead and check that out? Have you done that at all?
No, we haven't. Because we did test for things back in the day. And then certain chemicals were allowed again. But no, they're not, I don't know, you know, they come and go, federal deregulation. So I can tell you a hundred percent, we're on board with OHA. They have not made any requests, special request to us.
Jim, I think in the, the big report from DEQ. Yeah, they onsite test for Penta, and so that's what the results. That they, the overages, so it's coming from the company, which, you know, but they are testing there onsite and then it's reported to.
At their location, is what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, yeah, before it goes in the storm. Liz.
Preston, do you mind if I piggyback on some of what you said? So I called, I called Kathy Camerata at the DEQ to get, Mary, excuse me, Mary Camerata at the DEQ to get some more information, and that's when Preston was on the phone, but then I called him as well. So the, the thing with the million dollar fine is Stella, Stella Jones can either pay the entire fine to the state and just deal with it that way, or they can give eighty percent to the city for a project and twenty percent to the state treasury. It's entirely up to Stella Jones, as Preston was saying, we don't have any claim to it. And it's, you know, I'm, my instinct is it's meant to be, in order to be good neighbors, they probably will wanna know about projects. So my question here is, when you two meet with them, how, will we have some idea of what projects you're, you're proposing? Because I, what Mary said was that it's a good idea to go to the CEO with two or three different projects. And they choose the one that they feel best serves, you know, the community or what they wanna invest in. So I would like to know what projects that we're considering proposing to them.
So Preston, I'll, real quick, so the, that sounds like a good idea to present it to the CEO. The two people we're actually gonna meet with, they're, the, the CEO isn't one of them. But at that meeting, we're gonna be, you know, talking with at least two, two employees that are fairly, you know, high up. And then I will share some of the projects. I have a feeling that we'll have a second meeting to go over specifically these projects. The first one is kind of like introducing ourselves, seeing how they run things, that type of thing. And then kind of get us to the next step, which is, okay, here's, you know, what's your interest in this? Here's these projects, what, what do you wanna do, kind of a thing.
Do they have to be environmental projects, I think? I don't know if they have to be, but that's what she suggested, that they would be environmental projects.
My vote is anything related to stony, but that's me, so.
Well, or water-related.
Yeah.
You know, it could be the boat launch at Monroe Park.
River park facilities, yeah, can all be part of that.
Okay, more questions about?
So as far as like knowing what projects we might propose, I think that's just part of being connected to Kale and I. And you've given me, you know, input, but, and others can too. And then we take that too. There's not gonna be a list of here it is in writing, because this is not a public decision, see? We want them to make their decision with our input. And we, if we have a public decision, then would, you know, they're not gonna agree with that, you see what I'm saying? It's a private decision. And, and so through Kale and myself, you gotta get as much information as you need.
The, the good news is though, is that we recently have a completed water master plan that has tons of projects in it, so. We can look at that.
Funds that were spent on the water.
Yeah.
And, and they're gonna probably choose to do a lot of that onsite, remediation, investment. So I think we'd be grateful for whatever projects, you know, that they decided to fund, if any, of the cities. But so anybody that wants to be involved with that, you gotta get connected with Kale and myself.
And the person I talked to seems really, you know, receptive, so I think any, you know, anything you wanna share, any project you need to share with me, and well, I mean, I won't hurt to ask, I don't think.
Well.
Go ahead.
So right off the top of my head, with winter coming on and overflow situations, right? I mean, that, it wasn't, it wasn't overflowed that there had overflowed because of the saturation point? Wasn't that it that?
No, they opened a tank full of chemicals.
I heard that they.
It was during the summer.
Oh, it was during the summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
That's right, that's right, I remember that.
The, and in the winter, we pull from the springs, so.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a plus.
That's a question that's come up to me though, from residents. What is the percentage, like how, what months are we pulling from the springs?
Yeah, depends on how much water, I think, I mean, sometimes in August, we're able to pull some from the springs. I think it's, it gets mixed, Kai can probably answer that better, but you know, basically when it's wet is when the springs are also wet, so we get water from them. But Kai, go ahead.
Twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year.
Oh, we're always pulling from the springs? But I thought the river was backup when the, when the springs were, like I thought in August, when it's dry, we were going, the river was backup.
It is secondary source.
Okay.
Springs are always flowing, it just doesn't meet our daily demand. So right now, it's three hundred fifty gallons a minute. On the weekends, that does not meet our daily demand. So we will pull.
So it's supplemented and then next?
Absolutely.
So July, August, October, or pretty much, those are the months where we.
Those are the months, yeah.
From the, yeah, I remember.
Okay.
And even when the reservoir is up and running, I, I think the river still might need to be supplemented a little bit. It's from what I understand from the engineers, but not as much as.
So it's only a couple of months when people ask that question, right?
Months, we pull water out of the river?
That we're, yeah.
It depends on the weather, I mean, it depends on rainfall, there's a lot of things that factor into that. I can't, I mean, I can give you historic numbers, but I can't predict what we're gonna do in twenty twenty-six.
Two to three months we're supplementing, you know, but it's, it's not heavy, but it would be if we ran low.
It just kind of coincides when the springs are low. The river also happens to be low as well, though, so. Okay, thank you. Got more questions about Stella, do you have more items to go over?
I don't think so.
Okay, just, the last Stella is the last.
Yeah, I know, one more item.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions about Stella first? Okay, go ahead.
The, the last item, your honor, is to kind of give you an update on the staffing that we have going on here. And as you know, we have we're currently recruiting for an assistant city manager slash finance director. Here's a copy if you wanna share in a moment. And, and we had six, we have six written applications I took this morning. There could be a lot more electronic stuff, then we'll know tomorrow what's happening, but that seems to be perking along pretty good. And, and you recall, we talked about doing the WDC recorder as an in-house promotion. And we are down to one candidate now for that. It's not final yet, but I, I kind of expect that within the next week. And at that point, if that transpires the way we think, then we wanna come right back to fill the last of our holes in staffing with this. And that would be, a- a- as you recall, our current code enforcement officer is slash emergency services coordinator. And all of those emergency service duties are gonna be transitioned to public works. So what we have here, a full-time job is code enforcement officer slash community services coordinator. And it really does fill the holes that we need, that we're missing. Right now, I'm overwhelmed, I'm overwhelmed with code enforcement. But, but the public outreach portion and the liaison to community groups and support for community activities and events and distributing, developing public outreach, that's the other piece of this position. And, and that's gonna ebb and flow, you know, what's, what's more important? Summer's pretty high for our code enforcement and then it dives down and then after school, kids are back in school, boom, all of a sudden, big, you know, spike in activity. But this draft job description is the last compliment to fill our needs on staff. When it's all said and done, we've lost two staff members and we'll be hiring two staff members. The assistant and then the code enforcement officer will be hired. But we couldn't, we can't bring the code enforcement officer on soon enough. Jim, another question?
I'm slightly confused, 'cause I've got, oh, I don't have this one, but I've got three other drafts. One is for the assistant city manager slash finance director. And you mentioned the deputy city.
And you mentioned the deputy city recorder.
Correct.
And you also passed out a finance specialist draft.
Yes, the finance specialist slash city recorder is our very own Omega, who got her certification. She's taken on more role in finance, so that's why her finance specialist is first and foremost in her job panel. And that, that is just a formality that I think all goes into, and me, I maybe haven't signed any of that, but it's a formality. It's not a.
She's definitely.
Correct.
Into the finances, having worked with her, asked her questions, she knows an answer. And if not, on that rare moment, she goes to hers, um, Ivan, what, what about this? And Ivan goes, oh, it's that, and she, oh yeah, I knew that, yes.
Well, I mean, I always know when, when Omega figures something out. We, we, we hear, we hear her figure something out. Yeah, something, okay, she just figured out why, you know, something in her finance. So that's nice. But, yeah, so, so this is, this is not actually, it, it's kind of a promotion for her, for, for Omega. She was already getting the paid differential for the finance. So all of this does is formalize what she's already getting with her job description.
That makes more sense.
So, so the, the new position really would be this code enforcement slash community service coordinator. And, and, and it's a full-time job. We're looking for somebody with criminal justice or actual law enforcement experience. And that can, you know, write a ticket in the morning and do dog vaccinations in the afternoon. That kind of a person, very friendly and experienced in, in that regard, working in a public agency, so. I'd like to be in a position here very soon, within, say, a week to two weeks of recruiting for that last position that you have here. If you have questions on this or comments, you know, take a week and give your comments back to me. Signal later than next Monday on this job description. And we'll tidy that up before we start recruiting. Jim?
What's the closing date for your assistant city manager?
Next Monday. We require a resume, a city application, and a cover letter.
Uh, you wanna go ahead?
I just wanted to piggyback on my question, cause even though we're kind of shifting this code enforcement position, I'm, I'm not sure how many people realize how much Angela was doing in the community service coordination. And when Alisa and I sat down and went through the list of all of the events and all the things that actually she has taken on, you realize like, holy cow, how was she managing that? I'm already sweating bullets because I know we have the trunk or treat to prepare for and we don't have the staffing to do it. So it's crazy how much you realize behind the scenes what she was just doing. And a lot of stuff that's actually kind of important. And the cooling center she was running and Public Works has had to pick that up for us. A lot of these community outreach and services was all in her wheelhouse. And it's really become an important part to that position.
And the vaccination clinic?
Yeah, all of those things.
Thank you.
You talked about her in past tense, she's just on sick leave now, is that correct? She just departed us, I mean, she still works for the city?
We can't talk about that.
But, well, I don't know, which is what you can say as far as.
I miss her immensely. I got an inbox full of code compliance complaints. And, yeah, she's, she did outstanding job for us in that capacity. So we're gonna be without her for a while still. And looking forward to her return soon.
I'm getting here.
Okay, other questions about Preston's work? Are there any else to share?
I'm not sharing it all.
Okay.
My son's married now.
Oh, congratulations.
Yes. That doesn't mean they're gonna have kids anytime soon. We're gonna get a dog. Whatever, yes.
Uh, okay. Uh, next, mayor council, councillor comments, Danny?
Uh, just a couple of questions. This probably Kai, I didn't have to go through this. On the twenty-sixth of fifty-four, the expansion port, there was a carport purchased below for two thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Did we approach any businesses here in town or, or that carport?
I believe we did, but I will double check on that.
Because I'm sure Lowe's can order it. And these people can order it, and that's a pretty nice price.
Great question.
So I, yeah, I'm, I'm avid about job locally. Because again, our, our businesses need the money. And we are in town, we are in council, city government, and use to support our businesses. And it's just, they went too many years with too many thousands of dollars going somewhere else. So, thank you.
It is a standard policy, but we're not perfect, but I will, I will get it accurate.
I have another one for Kai. On the two hundredth block of Hill Street, there's, there was water leaks. And so the pipes were dug up. I don't know what's happened there, if they're totally repaired or waiting for parts, but this has been several months ago. And so they're just filled in with gravel and then they get knocked out. I'm sure council member you were going to do it every day. I know I do, when I sell my properties.
I saw it today, it's a perfect square cut.
Yeah, there's one there and there's one next to it.
Yep, I saw it today.
It's kind of annoying not to get those patched.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, is that, all right, Liz?
Um, last meeting, last regular meeting, I brought up Cornerstone Plus. This is involved you two, that Cornerstone Plus is what Public Works sprays for weeds along the curbside. So I've been doing research on Cornerstone Plus, does not sound good. So what I also did, and I hand this up to everybody, let me make sure I keep my, mm, later than I'll put it back. There you go. And then, Yvonne, do you want one too?
I got one, yeah.
So what I did is, it, I think, I looked at other communities. And in Tillamook County and, and Lang County, they have a no-spray agreement. They offer residents the option to opt out of being, their curbsides being sprayed. In fact, Lang County even offers residents, parents, the option of, they can fill out a form to not have their bus stops sprayed, so their children won't be exposed to it as well. But I brought in a, this packet has, that, this example from Tillamook for the option. Is that, would that be a nightmare for you guys if we offered that option to residents?
Thank you for doing all the research, first of all.
Yes.
I'm not aware of any cities that have that policy. But you mentioned counties, it's a lot easier on a county road to not spray twenty acres of curb or street than it is block to block. I'm not saying it's impossible. I could probably use AI to search for some of those policies in other cities. I'm not aware, but it doesn't even exist, it doesn't even don't exist. So, but I take instruction from the citizens. If you have to see any instructions, you can do it, I'll do it.
Okay, because I, I, you know, I'm quite concerned. Because I, I know when, when it was being sprayed by my house, right afterwards, I saw three dog walkers and their dogs were stuck and right in the spray. And then, of course, they lick their paws when they get home, you know, after the rain. And it, I, I would like the option not to have my corner sprayed. And I would take the, I would just on myself to take care of the weeds with the weed whacker and do that. And that's what they've done in both Lang County and Tillamook County where, okay, if you opt out, then the curbside's on you to take care of the weeds.
Yeah, I, I think most counties actually have that same policy, it's not within the states.
Eugene does.
If I'm instructed to do so, I will find it.
Yeah, well, that's my next question with the council, like.
The council does not direct Kai.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to direct Kai, that's not why I'm asking. How do we go about giving people this option? Is that something the council has to vote on? Or it doesn't have to be put to the voters? How do we, what is the process here?
I think the first step would be looked into by the city manager. And then depending on what he finds, it will come back to us. And then I think we would determine the next step.
And I, I can tell you that my, my approach to this is to change our spray program. Done it in other cities. This seems like a nightmare to me. Good for county maybe, but not for city. It's not, not to, to, to change how we do things. Then you don't need this. So that's what I'm working on.
So change what spray is being used?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, because this, from what the, the public works employee that I spoke with, Roundup, this is forty-one percent of, what's the active ingredient, glyphosate? Glyphosate, there's forty-one percent in this spray, which is less than what's in Roundup, of course. But they're still both bad. So is there any other alternative?
I bet there is.
I hope so.
As we have licensed applicators, they're licensed by the state board. Uh, okay, Peter?
I was just gonna, partly see what he said, but I, I guess if we're gonna talk about this, it should be like a, a regular kind of discussion. And then, also, yeah, we would wanna do something that's as low friction as possible because marking properties and then avoiding those properties would be, I, he doesn't wanna say it, but to me, it sounds like a nightmare.
That's what, well, that's what I was asking.
So it'd probably be an all or nothing kind of thing. So let's see what he has to say, and then we can talk about it from there.
Good, Jim?
I'm, the change is, I think, we're done with the spring. Um, this one's, oh, sorry, we had.
Good, sorry, Kai, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we have tried meat burners and we have tried Dawn vinegar and salt.
That's what I use and it doesn't.
That's all right. So, I mean, we're, it's not like we're closed, I'm sure Preston's got a great plan, and we'll book them together, so. But yeah, we have tried alternatives without any direction from the city manager.
Yeah, I've, I've done the blowtorch routine too.
Okay, Jim, go ahead.
Um, I have a question about our water meters. When they were first presented, it was way back when, it was touted that these are just great meters, because they catch leaks on either side of the, of the meter, that will notice a leak there. And once again, I won't mention the source that I read these on, but people are saying, I had a leak for three months, I didn't know. And it seems like it should have been seen somehow with these fancy meters we got. We were also supposed to get a app on our phone where we could watch our own water in the other one house. Turn off the water and there's still choke water running on our app that we've got a leak somewhere? What happened to all that?
So the leak, you have to manually go in and check the system for that. And I'll make sure that's being done. We do, we do have one person supposed to be checking that, so I'll double check and ensure that's.
That's gonna be good, I, I don't have issue, but I've seen others that are saying.
That, I think the last time I checked on that is still under development, but I will check it down.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be linked with Tyler maybe, does it?
Well, they didn't go with the Tyler one, because we were going to be going with the one through Camstrad. And then I believe that Heidi halted the Camstrad one because of the annual cost. I believe, I wanna say it was like ninety-seven hundred dollars. I'm, don't quote me, it's been over a long time. But I feel like that it kind of, but I, I think it was still in development, but I thought we were kind of just in a holding pattern on it.
Something, you know, you can do too, is make sure everything's off in your house and then just go look at your meter. And if it's moving, then you've got a leak.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I would do.
People are welcome to call a city hall too, because the staff up front is very professional and very good at jumping on and looking at that. That software isn't naturally intuitive, but they're good at using that software too.
I can, sure, when I did, I replaced all the plumbing in my house and I had it shut off on the inside. And when it froze, the outside pipe that goes into my house first. So for a period of time, I was just gushing water and didn't know. So I was able to talk to Marcy and she was like, okay, from this period to this period, it's like we had a big leak. I mean, I knew I had a leak, cause I could hear it. But she could tell me when it started and then when it stopped, and yeah, so that's, you know, cool that you can do that. Otherwise, it's like, just kind of guessing, so. Uh, Jim?
I got a couple more questions. I've got one when we were talking about the finances. It used to be several months back that we would get a sheet every month that showed our credit card purchases. And I haven't noticed that until, I just thought about it, it's like, hey, I've been signing checks every month and looking at all these, I haven't seen anything through our credit card.
The credit card purchases, that is something, well, our, they're usually listed out. And there has to be a whole GL adjustment to move those into the correct categories that, for when we pay that credit card statement. So everything goes, comes out of where it's supposed to. Our CPA is handling that in the background for us. I have darn near halted any use of my credit card unless it's the, really the only way to do it. Because in the meantime, we're just trying to get so many other things with Omega training and what she's doing and just literally not having the staffing to pull all of that off. I don't know, I don't think Kai's probably been using his as much. He's maybe using it more than mine apparently. But we, that is something, actually, Omega, I talked about today is starting to bring that back online for tracking those credit card records.
And then in the, in the same vein, I was talking with Omega as I'm signing the check to fifty. I didn't sign an eighty-two thousand dollar check to the federal government, oh, that was handled through ACH?
Yes.
But right off, I have no idea what he's.
So for all of our taxes, we, for our, our taxes, for payroll taxes, we go on to either the state of Oregon's website or we go on to something that's called Easy Tax for the federal government. And we, you, that's the only way to pay them. We have to go on to their sites and pay them that way. So you have, you've never in here, those are, they're all part of the payroll and they're budgeted for. And then it's all moved in the correct categories when we do all the budgeting. The one thing that I thought I would make sure that I addressed with you guys, because while you know the total amount of those penalties and fees, one of your big concerns, I know, is what are we doing to prevent something like that from happening again? And currently, we have three people now who all have eyes and hands on payroll, some piece of it, or backing up somebody else, and that is Alisa, Omega, and I. And Alisa takes care of anything that goes to the state of Oregon, including hers and payroll taxes. I take care of anything that goes to the feds, so our nine forty-one and all of our payroll taxes, Medicare and Social Security. And Omega takes care of all of the physical checks that need to be cut for insurance and ASWAC and all of those items. And all three of us go through and do all the checks and balances on making sure our payroll that we pay our employees is accurate. So the three of us are always kind of knowing, and all three of us, if one of us wasn't there, Alisa wasn't there for part of this payroll cycle, we're able to pick up the other two of us that are there. So we're really trying to make sure nothing like that happens again. And we've been trained, fully trained in Tyler's program, so.
Have a check.
Yes, have a check program, yes, thank you for, but I just wanted to reassure the council that we are working very hard on making sure something like that doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Great, Danny?
So the, the question I have is when the payroll's done, then these taxes are moved into that place where it has to go. But that's not automatically set to the agency. But that's not automatically set to the agencies to collect their taxes?
Um, well, well, it, um, it categorizes where they need to go, so it comes out of whether it's, um, Public Works, the water sewer, that, whichever fund is supposed to come out of, the system figures that out, and then it's dumped into a pot, that's what we just call the zero-one-one pot. And that's, we physically have to pay that out of that pot too now, based on the reports that are run from this.
Okay, I, I don't have a lot to do with payroll anymore, but I do know that there are payrolls that, once it hits that pot, then it automatically goes to where it needs to go.
Uh, it's versus throughout our budget, yes, if that's what you're talking about. Um, but we physically have to send it to the jurisdictions, um, and fill out all of the nine forty-ones and the reporting that goes with it. So, they all get, the, the feds, they, they get a report that's called a nine forty-one, which says, you know, what the tax is off, the Social Security, what it is for Medicare, and it's a whole big payment, but we have to tell them what each of, what, what pot each of those are going into.
Yeah, I appreciate the answer, and, and maybe I'll take some time and a couple to talk to you.
Yeah, yeah, I can show you, it's, it's kind of interesting, it's quite the process.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Peter?
Just one last question, on Mr. Preston, do we have any updates on our, the biggest ice storm in the city, Hider Building? What's going on there, it's heard a lot of rumors, a lot of things, it's sold, and it's sold with the auction, it's, I, where do you have?
Well, uh, we're trying to arrange for a tour of the building, uh, and speak with the, the new owner's representative, but, but, uh, uh, I'm understood that we have a new owner. He may have acquired it through some foreclosure, whatever process, but there is a new owner, an owner rep, and a realtor. So, uh, they're interested in, uh, getting the city interested in that building. So, I'd like to take a look at it, uh, and, uh, and start developing those relationships.
Excellent, so if there's a new owner, we must want to do something with it, so.
Uh, we'll find out, and, uh, yeah, and, and another building that's, uh, generating some interest is the, uh, the Huntley Building, you know? So, I want, I wanna know more about that also, so I can help be an advocate for someone that expresses an interest in that building. That's another one I wanna try and get into.
Excellent.
Okay, anything else, um, otherwise, we can motion to adjourn, Danny?
Can we come up with a adjourn?
Second, okay, discussion, okay, all in favor, all right, we're adjourned, it's, uh, eight thirty-four.
I, it's crazy.
I'm gonna get into that, I'm just going to, I'm just, I'm just.
Right, we have that.